This is the Wabash Carnegie Public Library Oral History Program. George Dingoldy speaking, and I am interviewing Carlos Jack Minor at his home 112 East Main Street in Wabash, Indiana. And the date is January 12th, 1987. Jack, I think the first question I'm gonna ask you is, tell me about your background. Tell me where you were born, and who your parents were, and what town it was, and all that stuff.
Yeah, I can guess I can do that.
Yeah, you should. Nobody knows him better than you.
No, I was born in a little town called Greensburg.
Greensburg.
And I lived in DeKeter County until I was 12 years old and moved to Indianapolis. My father was with the Chevrolet Motor Company as a representative, and he moved from one town to the other to further the business. And he died when I was 13 years old, and we moved into an apartment in Indianapolis and just stayed there. And I was in Indianapolis until 19...help, 1900.
Incidentally, we can leave the dates that you can't remember, we'll just leave them blank, and then when you get the typed copy, we can just insert the dates, so don't worry about that.
Okay.
When were you born? What was your birthday?
I was born October 31st, 1913. I was a Halloween baby.
And what was your mother's maiden name?
My mother's maiden name was Simmons.
S.I.M.M.O.N.S.?
S.I.M.M.O.N.S.
Now, why?
Lila Simmons.
Where did your name come from? Was it a family name?
I have no idea. My mother never seems to have any idea where it come from either. All of a sudden named me Carlos. Well, of course, I'd be gone by Jack ever since I've been in Wabash. So, more than one way to change your name, I go in court, you just change it.
Now, were your grandparents on either side? Your mothers or your fathers? Were any of them living when you were a child?
Oh, yes. My grandfather and grandmother on my father's side was living.
Where did they live and what did you?
They lived in Burney, Indiana. That's not Burney like they got up, Burney up here, it's Burney down by Columbus, Indiana.
And how do you spell it?
B-U-R-N-E-Y.
And what did they do?
Well, my grandfather was a farmer and, what do you call them? Horseshoers. Blacksmith.
Right.
And my grandfather on my...
Mother's side.
On my mother's side, which is also her stepfather, he was an Indianapolis car, you know, drove a horse, looked to a...
Streetcar.
Streetcar.
Yeah, okay. But what happened to her?
Until he retired.
Yes.
And then he died then in 1926, I believe it was. And my grandfather on my father's side, yeah, on my father's side, he was a farmer and a...
Blacksmith, they say.
Father and blacksmith, and, you know, my...
But when did he die? Was it before the Mr. Simmons or the other?
No, he died before Mr. Simmons.
You mentioned that your mother had a stepfather.
Yeah.
What happened to her real father?
I don't know. They were married before I was born.
And hopefully, and...
My see, my grandfather Myers was a stepfather, and he and his former wife had five in their family. And on my father's side, there's five in it. So, they're whole raft of kids.
Jack, you remember seeing grandparents on both sides of the family?
Oh, yes.
Do any of your children look like any of the grandparents?
No, I don't think so.
None of them do?
I don't think so. My son, of course, looks something like me, and I look something like my father. But other than that, I don't know of any resemblance of any.
But you would say the three of you would look quite a bit alike?
We would. You could tell the virality.
Yeah. How many in your family then? Directly brothers and sisters?
Brothers and sisters.
In your own?
There's no one left in my family.
How many were there?
My brother was the only one.
That was Bob.
That was Bob.
Yes.
And he worked for me here for about 10 years. Then he went to Florida and died down there.
But you didn't have any sisters then?
I had no sisters, no, just the one brother.
Yeah, I'll be darned.
And I'm the only one left in the group.
Now, you lived in which town until?
I lived in Indianapolis.
After you were 12 years old?
Yeah.
But before you were 12 years old?
Then I went to military school when I was freshman in high school.
Where did you go?
Kentucky Military Institute. And then I came to Wabash when I come home from school. Well, my mother had married an attorney here in town, and they wanted us, my brother and I, to come up for the summer.
Yes.
And we got up here and got into the building business and built a filling station. Let's see, we had, I think we spent about three months building a filling station. We got that all built where they closed up the street on us and Stitt Street. Had one whole summer then, there wasn't any business. And that was the luck of the villagers. Then I went to work for Mr. Hoover.
Doing what?
Working in around the funeral home. And then the following year, I went to bombing school.
Let me go back a little bit. When you were about 12 years old, 13, you went to Kentucky Military Institute?
Yeah.
And you stayed there four years?
Mm-hmm.
And in this period of time, your mother had remarried?
She had remarried and moved to Wabash.
Yeah. Well, what happened to Mr. Minor, your father?
My father was killed in an automobile accident when I was 13 years old.
That's right, you pointed that out. Where was the accident? In Indianapolis?
Over by Jonesboro.
And then who did she marry then, Jack?
She married Herman Hibbsky in Wabash.
Herman Hibbsky, yeah, okay. And where did they meet?
That, I have no idea.
But you got out of Kentucky Military Institute? And how much older was Bob or younger than you were?
Bob was two years older than I was.
And what had he been doing up previous to this?
He was going Butler.
Going to Butler?
Yeah.
Then you came up here and you built this gas station on Stitt Street?
Yeah. It was out across from the Squeezie. I don't remember where the Squeezie at was.
Right, right. There's still a business in there, there's a convenience store.
It's a filling station and a fruit market, I believe.
Yeah, it is now, yes.
But that was during '29, '30. Oh, see, it can't be that. That was in '32.
Why did they close the street?
Because of D repair.
And it took that long, the whole summer?
Yeah. They widened it and did everything to it that they could do to it.
Had General Tire bought the buildings yet there at Service Motive?
Well, the General Tire was vacant. Let's see, I believe about a year, then the General Tire came in from Ohio, and they opened up, I believe it was in the fall, when they opened up, and we opened the filling station back up in Manette for a year and a half, two, or...other than that, I...
Did you make any money? Did you and Bob make any money?
No.
No money?
No, there just wasn't enough, there wasn't enough business back at that time to make any money on filling stations. We thought there was because there wasn't any out there. But it wouldn't, didn't go very good.
Yeah. Was there a road to Peru? Was it paved and everything at that time, or...probably? You don't know?
I don't remember.
Yeah, that would've been '24.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah. Where were you two living then? Where were you and Bob living?
We were living at Hibbsky and House.
Still living at home? And where was it?
Up on Huntington Street.
On Huntington Street?
447 North Huntington.
One of those big houses on the right there?
Yeah, up that way.
Yeah, okay. And then you got a job with Mr. Hoover?
Yeah. He had had some bad luck with his son. He had sent him to bombing colleges, and he didn't like it. So, I took over and went to school.
Did he stay in the business after you got out of school?
No, he left. He went, he was with the plane dealer.
That was your brother-in-law?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Charles.
Now, did your father-in-law, did Mr. Hoover stay with the business then?
Oh, yeah. He stayed with it up until when did I buy him out? I knew you were gonna ask me these questions, I thought I'd pan up on it.
This is before the war or after the war?
Oh, this is before the war.
Before the war, yeah.
This is 1942. I formed the Indiana Guard here, and I commanded it for four years. I was the last officer in the state to be deactivated. And the last company in the state to have 60 soldiers. That's all we had in the company, and it was the only company left.
But you stayed with it all the way during World War II then?
Yeah.
What did you do? What were your duties?
Well, we just trained the boys up so that they, they'd say yes or no, sir, say yeah, no, and we had the men drills, squads, and we had war games out here in the hills.
Was this an infantry company?
Yeah.
Who were some of your officers back in those days?
Well, see, Luke Durnbo was my first lieutenant, and Ira Roman was my second lieutenant, and oh, I had a lot of names.
Was it a lot of fun?
Oh, it was work.
Yeah. You didn't go to camp in those days, did you, in summer with the war on and everything?
Yeah, we had two weeks.
Did you still pull two weeks' camp? Where did you go?
Well, we went to Fort Knox in South Bend. We used high school field up there for battalion maneuvers.
Where did you go to school in Indianapolis then?
I went to Indiana College of Ramone.
And it's still going?
Most of our science classes, it's still going.
Was it expensive, Jack, in those days, or?
Well, it wasn't any more expensive than anything else, but of course, nobody had the money.
Yeah.
I don't know, there's so many things that I could if I, if I'd just sit down and start remembering them that I could tell you, but...
How long did it, how long was your course down there in those days?
Just a year.
Just a year, yeah. And then you were coming home on weekends and working and...
Yeah, working on weekends and playing on the day in the week.
At school?
At school.
Yeah. What was the business like in those days? Where was the, well, first of all, where was the business located?
Well, it was located right where it is now.
Right where it is now.
The only thing is, then, after I bought it, and then I bailed onto it, which I did that about 10 years ago, 12 years ago. But, oh, the business was no different than it is now, with the exception of, it's like everything else, you get better merchandise, it costs you more.
Right.
You got more chapel space and more people's space.
In those days...
The place wasn't air-conditioned or anything like it is now. We were in two big air conditioners.
Yeah. A lot of them taken to the home in those days, or?
Well, they were taken back home and...
Still being taken to the home?
Yeah. Some of them were even bombed in the home.
Oh, really? Did that make it fairly complicated for you then, or?
Oh, yes, it was a complicated thing to do. Of course, you were running an ambulance business at the same time. Ran that out until the city took over.
Was that profitable part of the business, Jack?
Funny part of it, you talk about profitable business, the ambulance business never was a profitable business, it isn't today. But it was a lot worse back then because you charged $3 for a five-man deal, and nobody pays you because they didn't have any money. Other than that, the ambulance business was a farce.
Yeah. Yeah, you had to buy the ambulances and...
Oh, yes. Pay all expenses.
Then you run call 24 hours a day?
Oh, yeah.
And you didn't divide it up? Everyone did their own?
Well, we finally did after, oh, after the older men got out of it, like Homer Hoover and Homer Jones and Marlon Wire. We ran, well, Wire was still in on it. We divided it up month at a time. You did it all 24 hours a day for 30 days, and then you were off for two months, waiting to get back on so you could go back to work.
Yeah. Did that bring business, did that bring you business too eventually, or not?
Oh, I don't think so.
Did it cost you any business?
No, it didn't cost us any, but I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we gained anything by it. But somebody had to do it. That was the only thing. We were the only ones who had the type of machinery and everything that you needed to make ambulances out of.
Homer bought the house then from Dr. Smith, or?
He bought that from Dr. Smith and tore it up and made funeral home out of it. Then I come along and I tore it up some more, and, oh, it's just been tore up so many times that that's what's left.
Yeah. Did you live upstairs then in those days?
Yeah.
Lived upstairs. And who lived in this house then?
Percy Dixon, who owned the theater.
And he could walk back and forth through his, to his business?
Yeah.
Anything unusual back in the days, in the early days when you got into the business? Anything unusual?
Oh, I can't say that there's anything anybody would be interested in, other than the fact that a lot of people got laid out in there, and that's where their mother and father were very...
Uh-huh. It was several generations then that you were taking care of them?
Yeah, Homer had the first funeral home in Wabash County, actually. It was, it was just a large home.
That wasn't a combination furniture store or something else?
He had the combination furniture and funeral business downtown where the Service Rowback building was. And he sold that to Mr. Croomright, who was his partner at the time, and he took funeral business.
One took the furniture store and the other took the...did they have training back in those days too, Jack, or was it apprenticeship or what?
You had two years of apprenticeship, but didn't amount to anything. It was just a name that they gave. Some funeral director, Indianapolis President, Vice President, Secretary of Treasury. It's about as good as it was.
Yeah. Did you ever get active in the association on a state level or anything?
Oh, I was on state board for a year back in '38 or '39, but Mr. Grandstaff, who owns the business now, he's on the state board and State Board of Education and everything else. But it's like all the colleges, they're all, today they're better than they were back 30 years ago.
Yeah, that's true. What did you do for a hobby in all those years?
Well, you didn't have any because you worked 24 hours a day, seven days a week. My only hobby was, was my military experience that I'd had. I tried to take care of the boys as much as I could.
Did Mr. Hoover, did he stay in the business then until he died, or?
Well, he stayed in the business after I bought him out. He stayed around the business about three years. And I can't even remember what date I bought the place, or what day, or what day they sold it.
Before World War II? I presume you bought it before World War II?
No, it was right along, not that time when I bought in. It was the business.
As you look back on the business, would you have rather have done something else, you think, in your life?
No, I don't think so. It must've been what I was put here for because I never did complain about it.
Well, that's, that's pretty good attitude, you know, that's... When you moved over here then, was that a big move, moving from the business over here? Was that?
No, it wasn't so big. It was just a move to get things straightened around because I had to, I had to get somebody else in over there. I had telephones and doorbells both ringing in both homes.
When you were first in the business, what would a good year be? 30, 50?
All 50s, 50 bodies.
Would've been a good year?
Would've been, it would've been a good year. You had to have 50, 50 up.
And then Marlon Wire? Who, you were number one in those days?
Well, Jones and, well, Mr. Jones, Jones had been in the business for as long as Hoover had, or probably been before Hoover. Wire, I don't know when he come in. Anyway, he got mixed up in it, and they had another funeral director on the south side.
Who was that?
Well, I can't think of his name. If my wife was in here, she could...
They had one on the south side?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, and then Moyn Lutz, the Lutz Furniture Store downtown, he was the funeral business too.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Moyn Lutz was in the funeral business? Huh. He ran it out of the furniture store? I'll be darned.
Yeah, he ran it out of the furniture store like Hoover and Jones did out of theirs.
Yeah. Well, of course, that was common in those days, yeah. That all came from the old carpenter bit way back, years past.
Yeah, they made their own gaskets.
Did all the work themselves?
Yeah. I guess it was quite something that you used to take funeral and you'd take it to the cemetery, or you had horse and baggy and wagons. And funeral coats, you pulled what? Two white horses, you know, and I guess about three to death up there sitting on top of that.
Of course, that was all gone before you got there.
Yeah, that was, that was past.
Yeah, by the time you got into the business, yeah.
Yeah, but they had some beautiful cars when I came. They had McFarlins and Pierce Arrows and big cars.
LaSalle?
LaSalle, we had two LaSalles.
V12s?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, those weren't, those were just automobiles?
No, they were funeral coaches.
Coaches? Yeah, I didn't realize that.
Built on ambulance chassis? Cadillac chassis.
Yeah, I'll be darned. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, you had to have them special made.
What was the technique that you learned to attract business and to keep it over the years?
Well, the only...
It must've been something.
The only way you could attract business was just treat people like, try to be nice to them, and try to do everything they wanted done. It was just a personal thing that a fellow had to do if you understand that business.
Did you ever run onto some unusual people that, after you got started, that made a lot of hot fire?
Oh, there were some people that you couldn't get along with regardless of what happened.
Yeah.
Because they, in the first place, they didn't, we had nothing to sell, other than yourself. People didn't want what you had. Of course, the only thing, merchandise that you had to sell was what governed the price of the funeral, which I, of course, in the United States, never did think was fair, but that's what you had to do. They just weren't in position to prove to anyone, not even how much work you were doing. They almost had to go with you to be able to sell. I mean, the wintertime was pretty hard when you got out in the country and get stuck in a snowdrift and try to work your way out of it.
Now, the ambulance stuck strictly to the city, or did you go to the county?
No, no, we took the whole county.
Took the whole county.
As a matter of fact, we'd go anyplace, but anybody tell us.
Well, didn't these little towns also have funeral directors like McNown at LaBrow?
Oh, there was McNown at LaBrow, and, of course, I don't know who, and Grandstaff's was. I forget what the fellow's name was.
But they didn't run ambulances, those little ones?
Yeah, they ran ambulances.
The little ones did too?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what made everybody out in the country so mad on the, well, we started getting out of it, was because they didn't know who to call, they didn't know how to go for help.
That's really unusual, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
When you think about it.
Yeah.
Well, tell me what you've done since retirement?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I got so tired of answering that telephone in the middle of the night and getting up. I always said I wore my clothes out, putting them on, taking them off, putting them on again. No, I've gotten up at least five times in one night. The doctors all had to too back at that time. They had to go out and get these people on their feet or pronounce them dead or something. We were always finding ways to get them out of bed too.
Of course, they were paid a little better.
Yeah, just a little bit.
What do you think the biggest changes are today in the world from when you were a kid?
In the world?
Or in your life?
Oh, there's so many changes in my time that I'd hesitate to say which one was the biggest.
And how old are you, Jack?
I'm 73.
73. Do you remember when your family first got a radio?
Yes, yeah.
Do you remember the occasion, or?
No, I don't remember the occasion. I remember it was a...I forget what kind it was.
At Water Kent, or?
I think it was At Water Kent. I think that's about... I think it was in At Water Kent. I think that's about right. With the three dials on the front that you had to get them all lined up.
Right. Do you remember, uh, did they always have a telephone at home?
No, no. Most of, uh, most of our family all had telephones because they were from Greensburg or Columbus or. But I can remember when they had the old crank type telephones. With questions.
Come up with a good question, huh?
We're getting back to this ambulance business. That was, that was a dirty job. Because you'd always go out with a white shirt on, you know, and you'd come back in with blood all over you and, and road oil.
And road oil, both, huh?
Road oil. But it was, um, it was a hard job, the ambulance business because there was so much lifting and people then seemed to stay upstairs more than they do now than go to nursing homes or hospitals today. But, uh, back then, like, you were upstairs and you had to carry them down and you might broke your back every time you went and brought one downstairs.
Did any of the people that worked for you go on to other businesses or do anything else?
Well, they went on to other funeral businesses, yes. Yeah, they. I can't think of just who it is now, but they're scattered around the state.
And you still hear from them?
Of course. And we'd get Christmas cards from them.
Well, how you been feeling? We might as well talk about your health.
Well, I haven't been feeling too good, but no harder than I'm working. I'm not hurting myself any. I can't walk. It's my trouble.
Is it?
Yeah. After I was operated on, I, I come up with not being able to walk.
I'll be fine. So that does limit you quite a bit then.
Yeah, I'm sure stopped my golf game.
Well, that's a good excuse now, see, yeah.
Yeah, I got an excuse to not go play because I can't walk that far.
It's immaterial, but you sleep and everything well, I assume, and eat well?
I sleep well and eat well. Twenty-eight pounds I've lost, I've gained back.
Oh, have you?
So I got to quit eating again.
You got to stop eating again? Mary's cooking too well?
Yeah.
In your days in the, in the National Guard, did they disband the whole group and, at the end of the war or what?
It wasn't the National Guard. It was the state, the state guard.
Like home guard or?
Yeah. Yeah, they disbanded the whole thing and, of course, they disbanded them company, one company at a time. Of course, the boys of the National Guard were still overseas. They hadn't come home yet. And in case of trouble, they had to have a military force. Only way they could do it, we'd keep these state guards in, in training.
Now, did the state guard have anything to do? Uh, did you have to do flood duty or strike duty or?
We were supposed to do, be ready for strike duty, flood duty, riot duty.
Never happened?
Never happened.
What was your equipment like?
Oh, we had good equipment. We had, uh, trucks that were all armored. They had rifles, thirty-odd sixes. And seven Thompson submachine guns. No, we were, we were well equipped.
Yeah, and this was an infantry company?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be darned.
Yeah, riot duty was the main thing that they were worried more about than anything else.
But nothing ever materialized it?
Nothing ever materialized.
Yeah, I'll be darned.
Oh, there was one riot, strike that we were called out on, up to Gary. But we didn't have to do anything. Only just show up and let the boys know we were interested in keeping things straight.
Who was the commander of that thing during the war? The overall commander for the state?
Oh, it was the Secretary of State. It's always the.
Is the commander of the home base?
Commander of the whole bunch.
I didn't realize that.
Always is.
Huh, I'll be darned. Did you get paid for that?
Yeah, we finally ended up getting, it was three dollars and a half a day.
This was after all, everything was over and?
Yeah, well, no. It was about, uh, six months before they deactivated us.
They paid you for all the back time and?
No, they never did pay us for back time.
I'll be darned.
I never, I think I was the last on the state of Indiana to get discharged.
Oh, were you? Well, what else can you tell me that's interesting then?
Oh, I can't think of anything much, George. After I go to bed tonight, I'll think of a lot.
Fifty things, huh? Well, we can write them down. Uh, your mother lived on here then until she died or did she move away?
Oh, she moved away. She moved to, back to Indianapolis.
Indianapolis, yeah.
Couldn't take it, I guess.
I didn't know him. Uh, he was from the whole.
He was an attorney here.
An attorney? Did he have a family then?
Yes, he had a daughter and son.
Are they about or?
No, I think they're both in California now. I don't know. I haven't seen any of them for ten, twelve years.
Yeah, and they'd be related to Kenny and all that, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure they would be.
Yeah. With a name like that, they'd have to be relatives.
Well, even Mildew was related to Kenny, you know?
Yeah.
She used to get a big kick out of that. They'd invite her to family affairs over there, you know?
You'd have to cut all that, wouldn't you?
Not really. No, not really. Uh, how do you spend your time now? Television and reading?
Television and reading and exercises and. Just, just keep yourself healthy so you can live a while.
I'm amazed that, uh, I'm amazed that you gained the twenty-eight pounds back. You are too.
So am I. I thought it was.
You thought you were in good shape, huh?
I thought I was in pretty good shape. I found out it wasn't easy to stay that way.
Now, does the doctor come to the house? Does he give you that courtesy?
No.
He still?
Oh, he does. He's been here a couple of times. The best thing are these little girls that they've got nurses that go around and do the, do the cleanup job for the dockers.
Visiting nurse and, you know. Do you still have catheter in, Jack?
No.
It's out and there is?
No, I haven't had it on for two months.
Yeah, yeah, that makes you feel better right there. It's uncomfortable. It's an uncomfortable feeling.
Yeah. It's a wet diaper.
Yeah, that's true. Very true. Yeah, that's, that's true also. But, um, well, I guess there's a lot of better alternatives to what we have sometimes. Well, what else can we say that we should have talked about? As you say, you'll go to bed tonight and think about fifty more things to talk about.
Yeah. This ambulance business is one and one thing that I probably should have said more about. Because I know that the boys did for years, they did ambulance business. All of them, not only just us. All of us in town. It was lost money every, every week. And what, yeah, they kept on doing it.
Yeah. I'll be darned. Let's check this. I think the first thing I'm going to ask you, Mary, is now I'm interviewing Mary Biner. At her home also, the same date. Tell me about your background and when you were born and, and so forth.
My background and when I was born, I was born in nineteen-eleven, April twenty-sixth, on Elm Street. I won't tell you the address. I don't really know.
It's the big house, the big white house. It's not that one?
You know where Bob Dernbaugh and Bickle live now? Well, we're right across the alley.
Across the alley from that house? Okay. And how many were there in your family?
There were four.
Four.
I had a brother, then a baby brother that died before I was born of a mass toy because they didn't know how to operate back in those days. So he passed away before I came. Then I had a sister, Ann, seven years later than mine.
And how many are living now?
Just the two of us, Ann.
And your sister. And what did, uh, well, tell me about your, about your folks. Your mother made a name and?
Mother was a Patorius. Now, wait a minute. I'm getting all mixed up here. I'm going back to my grandparents. Mother was a Bumbar.
Bumbar.
There were six girls and four boys in that family. My father, there were two girls and my dad.
Now, were the Bumbars from Wabash?
My grandfather came over here to get away from army in Germany.
Right.
And grandmother Bumbar was a Patorius. A relative of the Patorius has started the Trumps following South Africa. Where Patoria is now.
Right. What's the name in South Africa is about as common as Jones, you know?
Yes. Yes, that's right. And they were from Holland.
Now, their, uh, their parents, obviously, then were from Germany and you never saw them at all. Your grandparents' parents.
My great-grandparents.
Never saw them, yeah. Do your grandparents live on until you were of any age? Do you remember them?
No, my grandmother died during World War One. My uncle Walter Bumbar came into the room to tell her he was going to take a bath now because it would be the last good bath he'd have for a while. And she died in the chair, just as he had said that.
Where was he going?
Going into the service. He was in, uh, that was World War One, wasn't it?
Now, how old would she have been when she died then?
Oh, I would say maybe early sixties.
But you don't, you never remembered her?
Oh, yes.
You remember her, yeah. What did she look like? The reason I'm asking all these questions.
She's a little short, fat lady.
Now, there's a reason for asking these questions because your grandchildren someday are going to say, I wonder what mom or grandma's family looked like or something like that. But if physically, if you can tell me what they look like, then they have an idea of what.
Well, you know that John Houseman?
Yes.
On the movies, but that's grandfather Bumbar.
That's grandfather Bumbar.
That's John Bumbar. Every time he comes on the screen, I get it.
And what did grandma look like?
She was very short and fat, like my mother. Do you remember my mother?
Vaguely, yeah, I remember your mother.
She, she was short and fat like that. Had white hair, snow white hair. She used to have cows. Kept them there at the corner of Walnut and Huntington in a little barn at the back end of the house. And we had to go out on Miami Street where the high school is.
Yes.
There was just a big old field out there and grandpa Bumbar owned land out there. So they'd take the cows out there every morning and go out about four o'clock in the afternoon, walk them back up Miami Street and across Pauling and all.
Yeah, but he kept them at Huntington and Walnut?
Yes, you could, you could keep stuff like that in town then, you see. And my grandfather Bumbar took care of all the grapevines in the east end of town. He'd always have a bunch of little white rags, you know, hanging out his pocket. And he'd go around and trim all the grape barbers up in that end of town.
What was his profession?
He had grocery.
Grocery?
With a family that size, you had to have a.
Where was the grocery?
It was down where, um, the Blue Frank Drug Store was.
And that was?
What, what, what's the name of that now? Let's see, is that, uh, that's not Billings, is it?
It's right there in the middle of Market Street by the alley, correct?
No.
By the sweet shop?
Back, no, uncle, um, his brother had drugstore, the two of them had drugstores side by side. They got along real well. And so grandpa was the second store down from the sweet shop. Second store west of the sweet shop.
Of the sweet shop. Is that building still there or is it something else?
Oh, yeah.
As he had it. And then he had two sons that had drugstores in the next two buildings?
One son and one son-in-law. Then after he gave up the drugstore, uh, the.
Grocery?
Grocery, why they joined partners and had the drugstore. And we were talking about that just the other day. Lucille Eubank, do you remember Lucille Eubank who worked down here in the Prudential Insurance Office? She was saying that it's too bad there's not a place like that in Wabash anymore where the people all gather to visit. On Saturday night, maybe they'd stay open till twelve, one o'clock in the morning because that's where they hung out. They didn't have all the bars, you know, like they have today in places like that. And she said she had to fill out the cash receipts, you know, at the end of every day. So sometimes she got a little tired, they'd go home.
Would you, were you a little girl then and you'd get out of grandpa's grocery store and?
No, I never knew the grocery store.
Never knew the grocery store?
No.
But your uncles then had the?
Drugstore.
Drugstores.
Blue Frank Drugstore.
Blue Frank Drugstore. Then what did your father do?
Mine?
Your father?
He had a furniture store down where the old Sears building was. And.
You know, I have to ask these questions. I know what he did and where he was. But we don't have it on tape.
Oh, I see. And then he.
How did he get into that business?
Oh, my, I really don't know. Mr. Jones, Bernice Hipskin, do you remember the organist? Well, Bernice Hipskin's father was the Jones in Hoover, Jones and Crumrind. And so he got dead interested. He was working at the bank at the time and I can't tell you the name of the bank.
Your father was?
Yes, yes.
As a young man out of high school then or?
No, that's the interesting part. My dad only got through the eighth grade. And he worked for Husse Grocery down on the corner of Falls Avenue and Maple, that little.
Yes.
Corner there, yeah. And he would go out in the morning and go house to house collecting orders for groceries. Then he would go back into the store and he and another fellow would fill the orders. And then that afternoon, he'd hitch up the old horse to the old spring wagon and go deliver them. And then after he left Husse, he went downtown to Coke and Watson. Now, that's where the, oh, what's in there now? I think it's an empty building right now, isn't it?
Coke and Watson, where was that?
Coats and Watson.
On Market Street?
No, that was down on Wabash.
On Wabash?
On the east side of Wabash Street. And he worked with them. Then he had an opportunity to go into the bank and he worked there. Then he got into the furniture business. Then he and Mr. Crumrind bought out Mr. Jones. And then Mr. Crumrind didn't like the funeral business. So he and dad separated partnership. He kept the furniture and dad came on top of the hill and made the first funeral home in Wabash County.
At Dr. Smith's old house?
Yes, Dr. Lawrence Smith.
Northwest corner of May and?
Huntington, yes.
Huntington, okay. You know, so fifty years or a hundred years from now, somebody's reading this.
That's right.
These houses may be gone.
That little doctor had both legs off. And John Beecham used to drive and carry him around for him when he was a kid in high school.
Now, how did they learn funeral business in those days?
Oh, dad went to Indianapolis to bombing school. Oh, yeah, he had to go to bombing school even back then.
I'll be darned. Now, did your mother get involved in the business?
Oh, no.
Never got involved in the business?
Never did.
She didn't like it or?
She just was a homebody. She'd answer the phones, yeah. She'd take care of phone calls, but to spend much time around the place, she never did.
Yeah, never did. Now, did, were they active in a church or anything there?
Oh, yes, very active in church. My goodness, dad was a deacon and he was the elder and he was a trustee of the church and he was the treasurer for, I expect, thirty years. He was also very active in Masonic work and they were both active in Eastern Star.
Now, which church did they belong to?
Presbyterian.
Presbyterian church, yeah. Now, your granddaughter will know this. Tell me about your father's side of the family, the Hoovers.
Well, go back to Becky, his mother. She would go to the Wabash River fishing when she was into nineties. Fell in the river one time and the Suneheimer boys pulled her out. One time she called, see, my dad didn't like for her to go fishing. That was a no-no. So she'd always go clear up around Allen. So she'd always go clear up around Allen Street, down the Allen Street Hill to the river. So dad wouldn't know she'd gone fishing. But one day she called and she said, "Jack, you've got to come get me." He said, "What's the matter?" She said, "Well, I got a fish, I can't get home, it's too big." And when she got down, when he got down there, here she had one of those things called a red horse and its tail was out one side of her bucket and its head out the other. So she was quite a character.
Yeah.
And my grandfather worked at the straw barge, grandfather Hoover worked at the straw barge. And around the machinery some way because he had an accident to the back of his hand and died from blood poisoning.
When would that have been?
Before I was born.
And you were born in what?
Eleven.
Nineteen eleven, before you were born?
Yes.
I'll be darned.
And she was a widow all those years.
Yeah, never remarried?
Yeah.
I'll be darned, now that is strange, isn't it?
Yes.
What was your grandmother's maiden name?
Lutz.
Lutz?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, they were Wabash?
Oh, yes, the Honeywell, Mrs., the first Mrs. Honeywell.
Yes.
And Moyn Lutz. And there was a Jack Lutz that used to have a furniture store with Moyn who went to Anderson and opened up. See, when the Wabash, or when the Big Four Railroad pulled out of here, it took a lot of people to Anderson. So he followed that crowd to Anderson with his furniture store.
And the, his father, then Grandpa Hoover, what did he do?
You know, that's terrible, George, I don't know. I honest and truly do not know what that man did.
Didn't know whether he found?
He was a relative of Williams's, like Slim Williams. He was a relative that way with them. Then Grandma Hoover was a relative of the Cowbells and the Pettits.
Stitts would have been in there too?
Yes, the Stitts and Olive Lutz, Honeywell and Mrs. Vicus. Yeah, they were all involved.
Well, then...
They were farmers out in the country.
Then your father really hit the right business?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, basically, had a lot of relations and...
Yes.
And had been in businesses, so... What did he look like?
My dad?
Your father, what did he look like? I've seen photographs of him.
Snow white hair.
Right.
I never knew him with anything but snow white hair.
Tall?
No, not particularly. I would say maybe five-ten, something like that, he wasn't as tall as Jack. But he was a very mild-mannered person. He was one of those that, he'd pick the fly up and put it out the front door rather than kill it.
Yeah, I'll be darned.
Yeah, he was wonderful.
Now, what did he die of, in fact?
Well, lots of little strokes.
And how old was he?
Sixty women, no, he was seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
When he died. But he had a farm out in the country and the man that was running it for him or working it wouldn't get out and take care of the weeds along the road.
Feds fires?
Yeah, yeah. And he went out there and was cutting thistles and had his first stroke. And then, from then on, it was just, each time, there were less things that he could do or handle.
Then how did you meet Jack?
His mother married Herman Hipskin, a lawyer, and came to town right out of military school. And mother had to have something for these two grown boys that she brought up to this little country town from Indianapolis. And so Herman owned the land out on the corner of, well, right across from the General Tire. You know, that little market, well...
I think it's, today it's Old Dutch or something like that.
Something like that. And Herman owned the land on that corner. And mother put up the money for the building and built the building for a filling station to give the boys something to do.
That was Jack and Bob?
Yes, yes.
I remember Bob, yeah.
And of course, I had come up from Indianapolis and old maid's school teacher. So I met him at the Blue Front Drug Store. He was with Charlie Schroyer. And we went together two years and were married.
I'll be darned.
Because they were building the Stitt Street, Black Topping Stitt Street. And that station had to be closed. In the meantime, my brother Charlie had decided he didn't want part of the funeral business, although he was a licensed embalmer too. So Jack went to school, or he came down here and started working with dad. All on ambulance drives and stuff like that.
This is before you were married?
Yes, yes. And he went to bombing school that second year that we were going together and then we were married.
I'll be darned.
And the first night wedding in Wabash.
Night wedding?
A night wedding.
At the Presbyterian church?
At the Presbyterian church.
I'll be darned.
And every kid I'd taught in school for three years brought grandma and grandpa and mom and pop and all the kids.
Who was the minister at that time?
Lemayli. Reverend Lemayli.
And what year did you get married then?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, and then children?
June twenty of thirty-five.
You had children?
Yes, we had children, two.
And they were born?
John was born in thirty-seven and Gaynell came in thirty-nine.
Jack was just telling something interesting that, oh, I was asking Jack, do you remember Jack's father?
No, he was, he was killed long before Jack came to town.
I said, "Who looks, what, what's your father and so forth look like?" And Jack says, "John and I all look like my father."
Yes.
So there'll be three generations, so you've got some heritage as to what kids are gonna look like and grandchildren and great-grandchildren.
But he was quite a large man, and he was killed on his way to Wabash.
Yeah, he said he was killed in Jonesboro.
Well, it was in that Marion area.
Yeah, he said that Jonesboro was killed, yeah. Were you married then?
Oh, no.
Well, you weren't married.
Jack was only twelve years old.
He was twelve, that's right, twelve years old.
Something like that.
Well, this will be something dead if we get all this extraneous stuff out of the way then. Well, then you took the housekeeping where?
About the funeral home, they were there ten years.
That was traditional in those days to go right rooms?
Well, yes, I would say so. And then the Dixons lived here, Percy Dixon, used to have a theater. And we didn't think that we would ever get a chance to get this house, but they bought the one up on the corner of Cass and Ferry. The big one up there that...
Deckel owns it now?
Yes.
Deckel owns it now, yeah. The big brick house on that house.
Yes, yes.
They didn't build that? They bought it?
Jews built it.
Oh, did they?
But they don't ever build houses, you know, but they did.
I didn't know that.
I can't think what their name was. It was something weird.
Yes.
But several people lived in, the Howard Dodges lived in, I believe, didn't they? About the time you came to town, maybe.
Did you get involved in the business, Mary, at all? Well, your mother didn't?
No, mother didn't, but I did, I drove the flower car.
Yes.
Answered the phone.
You wouldn't do any of the prep work or anything like that?
No, no, but if there was someone, some older people didn't want women taken care of by men.
Yes.
So I'd always go in and stand around while they did. So that they, that would satisfy the people that wanted a woman around, you know? Because it was sort of new, they used to do it all in the home, you see, where they could be right there to know what was going on.
That's what Jack was saying, they used to do it at the home and doing the bombing and dressing and everything right at the home.
Yes, and have the funeral there. Set up all the chairs, all flowers.
Well, I remember my grandmother, I was nineteen, twenty-nine, and she probably, that'd be the one of the last in-home funerals, but I remember having the wake at the home and then taking the body to the Catholic church, yeah, but that was very common in those days.
They used to have those wakes over here.
Oh, did they?
Yes, yes, I know, I know, we had a family over there that, the child had died around about five or six years old, and so the mother wailed all night long.
Stayed right there?
Yes.
Did you stay up with her or...
Jack did.
Yeah.
Sat down in the office because it wouldn't leave the place.
Was that uncommon in those days or rather common to different customers or...
Well, funeral homes are pretty new, you see. And they just didn't know how to take it for sure because had it been in their own home, they would have all stayed up, perhaps all.
Found it all night long.
And then I had been married maybe four or five years and I decided at the time Wabash had public kindergartens. And so I went around to own PTA meetings and talked to them and got them convinced that we needed public kindergartens too. We had private kindergartens then, but that was during the Depression, yeah, and not everyone could afford them. And so although they weren't expensive, I think a dollar a week or something like that. And so I decided that after I talked to all of them and they all would stand behind me and they said, "Well, do you want us to go with you at the school board?" And I said, "I don't need you." Mr. Carpenter and, let's see, who were all around?
On the board, no, Frank Reddick probably, Dr. Foltz?
Yes, that whole crew, yes, because I remember the first question to Dr. Foltz to me was, "Now, what school do you want?" I said, "I don't want a school." Said, "But you've been fighting so hard for this, don't you want a job?" I said, "No thanks, I don't, I'm busy." So that's, that's my one little claim to fame. I got the public kindergartens for them, they put them on the, what, the plan?
Budgets there, yeah.
Yeah, put them in. That was old, early in the fall that I started out and they put them on for the next year. And then I didn't like the way some things were run at the city. So I went over to the courthouse to help clean out the cancer cupboard and I...
You and Mary, we were talking here just a few moments ago about your experiences in starting the kindergartens here in Wabash. You got everything off to a good start and the children are growing, your own children are personally growing up and any, everything going all right and with the kids and so forth?
Then I was starting in on my tail about running for the city council.
Right, you're gonna run, you're gonna run for city council, right.
So I went upstairs and it was about ten minutes till four that afternoon. Of course, they'd shut the thing off at four o'clock. And so I told them that I wanted to sign up to run for the city council.
Right.
And they said, "What ticket?" I said, "Oh, I don't know, how many do you have on each side?" So they said, "Well, we have so many over here on the Republican and we have one less over here on the Democrat." And I said, "I'll take that." So I signed up to run at large. Well, of course, there'd never been a woman on the city council and the women thought that was something great, so they put me in. And it cost me twenty-five dollars to run for that office. Bob Mitten had a real nice brochure of the family candidates and that's all we had with our own pictures on the front.
Now, was this Bob's first term?
Yes, yes.
This was his first term, okay. And that would have been forty-six?
Sixty-something.
Sixty, yeah, sixty-two, no, it was, yeah, it was sixties, you're right.
I was thinking around sixty-four.
Sixty-four, I'd have been about right. And you went in with Mitten and the whole thing changed?
Yes.
The Democrats went in for the first time since World War One?
That's right, we had one Republican, that was George Moore, and the rest were the Democrats.
And anything sensational happen those four years?
No, they put in fluoride agent, but I abstained from voting for that. I had so much literature flooded on me that I really, I was kind of boggled and I didn't know whether it was good or whether it was bad. So I said, "All right, I'll just..."
Forget it?
Yes.
As you look back now, what do you think of it, fluoride?
I don't know, I don't know, it's indifferent, I don't think, my teeth aren't any better because they're all bridgework.
Yeah, very true.
Oh, dear.
Uh, but that was basically the only issue, whether she put fluoride in the water that you could think of?
That I really got uptight about.
And other stuff was just...
But Mayor Mitten was so wonderful to work with. He was just a jewel, I tell you, that fella had more love for mankind than most of us do.
Yeah, he was a good man, very good man.
Yes, yes, he was.
Then you decided not to run for a second term?
My husband sent me to Arizona, so I couldn't. Bob Mitten sat in here in our living room until midnight. He said, "If I get this application down to the post office, by the time they close at midnight, they will still take it in later." But Jack, no.
No way, huh?
Well, I tell you, there were a lot of people that didn't know that there was such a thing as a party, whether we had a party or not, you know. And, and yet my dad had been on the school board as a Democrat for years. But Jack said, "No," he didn't want me to, he thought it had hurt the business too much.
Oh, really? Yeah, had affected the business?
He thought it did. Well, I had a woman right across the street and never spoke to me after that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Huh, well, that's things he might not do.
So I guess there was no big love lost on either side, but then he felt that that was just one person, that there were more perhaps, too.
I'll be darned.
He's never been involved in politics. And it doesn't make any difference, we go to the polls and, and vote and I cancel his and he cancels mine, so it doesn't really matter too much.
Doesn't make any difference?
No, I'll say no.
And then what did you do after that, just going back to being a housewife or something?
I was on the women's club board for many, many years. Some symphony board when it first started around here. Mrs. Honeywell and Mrs. Wilbur Ford and that group of women. And I guess that's about all, that's about all I ever did that was different from anybody else.
And raised the kids and got them off into their lives and careers and everything?
My daughter is a night supervisor at St. Joseph Hospital in Phoenix, has been for years. She has two adopted boys, got them when they were two days old.
How old are they now, Mary?
Jay will be nineteen.
He's out of high school?
Now in February. And Todd, of course, he had a little mishap, he had a snowmobile accident.
Right, I remember that.
He splintered his legs, something terrible. So he is only a sophomore in high school right now. Then John has two girls.
Two girls, yeah.
Their own.
Yes.
And the one manages two Domino pizza parlors, or not parlors because Domino pizzas are only delivery things, they don't go there and sit and eat, you know?
His children are old enough to be out making their own living?
And Carla also has had a big motor route ever since she's been able to drive of the newspaper in Phoenix.
Yes.
And Heather will be a senior, she is a senior this year.
In the school, high school?
In high school.
I'll be darned. But Carla is writing the pizzas and...
Managing two Domino pizza, two pizzas. Makes pizzas, takes the orders.
Great, that's great. When did you get interested in going to Phoenix, incidentally?
My brother had been out there for years, Charles. You see, he was in the war bond in the payroll allotment during the World War Two and he worked for Mr. Pulliam, worked under Mr. Pulliam. Mr. Pulliam was head of the whole state in war bond, Eugene Pulliam. So Charles had had rheumatic fever twice and it was developing again. So Mr. Pulliam thought if he was sent to Los Angeles area, maybe he'd be better. Well, it was too damp. So the, the government hired a driver to take him into Phoenix. And when he got in Phoenix, he found out that there were two newspapers for sale. And when he got in Phoenix, he found out that there were two newspapers for sale. So he immediately got in touch with Eugene Pulliam and he flew out there and bought those two newspapers. So Charles then was the business advertising manager, I guess you call it, of those two papers. And then he had an opportunity to go into Oklahoma City. Mr. Ed Gaylord, who owns airports and TV stations and what have you, and the two papers in Oklahoma City, um, took him in there. He thought he was such a great guy.
Well, he left Phoenix and went to Oklahoma City?
Yes, yes, but he only lived there two years because he was collecting a tremendous salary. And he felt that he had to go full pace to keep up with the demands and his salary. We went to Washington to a newspaper meeting and saw Joe and Marion Nixon there. And um, he had some blood in his urine. So when he got home, they felt he should go in for some examinations and they gave him a spinal block and he never came out.
How old was he?
Forty-nine.
Your brother was only forty-nine when he died?
It might've been fifty-four. He might've been fifty-four, but he was too young to.
I'll be there. And then uh, you had another brother? It's two brothers?
One died.
What did he?
From Mastoid.
Mastoid. How old was he?
Eighteen months old.
Yeah, that was before you were born?
Yes, yes.
That was all.
Yes, my mother was pregnant with me.
Yeah, when he died.
When he died.
Now, your sister?
Ann.
Yes.
Um, her husband went into Guadalcanal with the First Marine Division.
She married somebody from Wabash?
No, no, he was from Hanon.
Yeah.
And um, so while he was in Guadalcanal, she was working in the library at Leam Stanford. And um, Dick came back, he was a total wreck. So he was sent up to Great Lakes to recuperate. And while he was recuperating, Ann had rheumatic fever. And then, after he got out of there and was discharged, he went back to California and finished up his law degree at Leam Stanford. And they had a daughter, Kathy, who is a, quite an artist. Has her own studio, puts on her own art show four times a year in LA. So then Ann, uh, Dick, when he came back to this part of the country then, he got a job with Glidden.
Paints.
And Dirk.
Yeah.
He was a lawyer, head lawyer for Glidden and Dirk. And um, he'd had two or three strokes. You know, you can get so high in those jobs
Yeah.
that it kills you.
Yeah.
So Dick passed away from another stroke.
Where were they living at that time?
Cleveland, Lakewood, Ohio.
Yeah, okay. So he died?
Mm-hmm. And they were both fabulous golfers. Then she went to Phoenix because Sally was out there, that's my sister-in-law. And she wanted to go where it was warm because she'd had rheumatic fever a couple times, so she had to be where her health was better.
She never remarried?
No.
How old would she be now?
She's seven years younger than I am.
Sixty-five, sixty-seven?
Yeah, somewhere in that area. And is quite active in um, the Church of Beatitudes out there and um, she also is that person that does the writing of all pictures in the art museum there in Phoenix. She has to study up on the artist and study the picture and, you know, they always hide some little something in the picture and she has to find that and tell where it is.
Yeah.
But she's a very, very busy person.
Well, that's great. Then uh, she was no money worries, obviously, then?
Oh, no, goes that back in the days when you could buy stock.
Yeah.
Every paycheck, you can get so much stock in Glidden. It is no longer Glidden, of course. Um, it might be still called Glidden, but her stock is with SCM. Something like that, I don't know what it is.
Huh, I'll be there.
But she's a very, very fine, educated person.
Yes.
She went to school for an education. I went to school for fun.
Where did you go through, IU?
IU. And then, then I came up to Butler. Well, it was really called Madame Blakers. It was a kindergarten school originally.
Mm-hmm.
And then they added on the education for the other primary, kindergarten, primary and secondary education. Then Butler bought it. So my diploma came from Butler.
You know, uh, you've been around here all your life.
That's right, that's right.
And I always like to ask people that come back after fifty years or so for uh
Class reunions.
And stuff like that, that, what are the big changes in the community? In your lifetime, what do you think the big changes are in Wabash, in the community?
Oh, downtown. Oh, it makes me heartsick to go downtown and see what's happened to that. I look at that big Sears and Roebuck store where my dad had a furniture store all over that big building. Oh, he sold Edison, you remember the Edison photograph that had records about that thing? And he had a china department and he had a drapery department where uh, uh, these these people that ran the drapery department for them, they taught people how to make their own drapes. And lampshades, back in the days when they had those chiffon lampshades, you know, with gold parade hanging down all around.
The people made that themselves?
Oh, yes. Like this big lamp I have in here. Now, I don't know, I'll have to take that thing back down to um, uh, Saint Clair's and have a new lampshade made for that by whoever made them originally.
Yeah, I'll be there.
They're made over a frame. I can see those women sitting there wrapping with their white string, covering those frames.
Huh.
Yeah.
You'd say the downtown then is your biggest change?
I think so. I really do. And I think it's very sad.
Well, most of us comment on how they think the town looks seedier than when they left.
Well, I guess it's because I was never away from it long enough to have a real big change.
I think a lot of it's the point of view, you know, you hit it on a day when the sun is shining, the, the leaves are out.
Did Aunt Addie say it was seedy?
I don't remember. That's been several years since we did that.
And now her hair is white.
Yes, that's what you told. Uh, that's been several years, so.
Yes, it has. No, I think it is so sad that we can't find some something that's needed or wanted, because these places downtown can open up again. And now, when pennies leave, well, what are they gonna make out of that downtown?
I don't know.
It wouldn't even make good apartment places, would it?
People don't wanna walk up to a second story anymore.
No, like that building of yours down there, I can see that from my bedroom window. Uh, why are those, was there no third floor on that?
There was, there were three floors and a full basement. Three full floors.
Well, those, when I look down on that, they're all painted over.
Well, they've covered the windows with uh, with wood. They've covered the windows with wood. Well, just uh, it's not being used anymore and it's a lot easier than have the windows break out and things like that.
I remember when I was a little kid in grade school, there used to be a place like a dance hall up above the Rock City Restaurant. We went in.
I'm sure.
We went in a side door there to the Rock City and we'd have um, Girl Scout plays up there, you know? That's the same way with this old building across the street. I know it was falling down. It had been condemned ever since I was getting high school. And my dad used to have a fit because I'd go down there to those ballgames. He knew it was gonna cave in some night and I was down there.
You see, not it was.
That's what I'll say. We used to put on the one-act plays down there in that old gymnasium.
Was that the one that Robert Hipskin was connected with?
Yes, yes, it was. Is Robert dead?
No, no, he's still alive. To my knowledge, he is. I can ask Rita, she keeps up on them all. She knows. I think they're all still living. No, maybe one of them has died, but uh.
Well, I don't know where I.
Kenny wanted to kill a couple of them the other day.
Well, see, now Marilyn gets back into the Hipskins.
Yes.
Yeah. Her grandmother was Herman and Ed and all of them's sister.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Oh dear.
Very true.
They were a good crowd.
Yeah. Now, part of that group was Catholic and the other part wasn't.
I know.
I don't know which, which one she was connected with, but.
Well, uh, she was connected with the Catholic side, but her mother, I mean, her father didn't go to the Catholic church.
Yeah. What was, which one was he now?
That was Edgar Bombar.
Edgar, yeah, okay.
Um, he worked on the big forest station in the office.
But they were Catholic in the old country? Bombars?
No.
No.
No. Uh, his mother was Meg Hipskin.
Yeah, okay.
And he was my uncle Albert's son.
Yeah.
And he wouldn't join Catholic church, so he took off and left that woman with two kids.
Oh, really?
And he went to California and he never came back in all his lifetime.
Huh, did he remarried out there?
Yeah, he remarried a schoolteacher from Detroit.
Yeah.
But no one ever saw him. We didn't know that much, that he had married and, so he had no children or anything.
He would've been what relative of yours?
My mother's brother.
That would've been your uncle.
Her oldest brother.
Would've been your uncle then.
Yes.
But you remember seeing him, huh?
No, no.
Never saw him even?
No, he never even sent any pictures back.
Well, my mother had the brother had the same outlook on life too.
Well, he just.
When he died, we never even, nobody, to this day, no one knows.
This man's been dead for years and nobody knows.
Nobody knows where this guy's buried or anything else. And I presume it'd be the same there, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Huh, well, that's very interesting. Now, old Mr. Bombar that lived over here at the corner.
That was Jake, that was mother's other brother.
Well, he was a brother also, been your uncle then, yeah.
And Uncle Walter, who used to be in the drugstore down there with Uncle Jake.
Yeah.
Um, his widow's still losing Mary.
How old would she be?
Oh gee, her, it's black as Aunt Addie's and it's all real. She's French. She's French. Um, oh, she has to be close to ninety.
Yeah, now, she would be your aunt then.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Wasn't that interesting? That's really interesting, yeah.
Well, see, now Marilyn, we never knew Marilyn because her grandmother, who was this Hipskin woman, uh, didn't allow them to have anything to do with the Bombars because my uncle had left her. And uh, he was a lawyer.
Yeah.
In fact, when um, Jean Leaky bought that house up on the corner, the Bombar house, in the attic, she found Uncle Albert's diploma from law school in Indianapolis.
I'll be there.
And Barbara Biffle has it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she's gonna have it cleaned up. It was sheepskin.
Yeah, now, would Barbara be a relative also?
Yes, her mother. Her father was my first cousin.
Huh, well, I'll be there. Isn't that interesting?
Can't say anything about anybody.
No, you gotta watch it, shh, know them all. Well, isn't that interesting?
Oh dear.
Well, what else haven't we covered here?
Well, I think we covered pretty well. Pretty well.
That's Jack, uh.
Well.
He covered a lot of material that uh.
Did he? Well, I.
As I said, when they type all this up, uh, you can correct dates.
Are you gonna miss?
Let me close this off and then we can talk.